Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call a meeting in order. Please rise for the pledge.
Let us pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, make note, everybody's present tonight, little house. Old business. Item number one is approval of minutes. The regular meeting minutes of June 16, 2022 are attached. I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 16, 2022, as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call roll.
Mr. Trinkle?
I don't remember if I was here. You were here. Nope, that's Dane.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Same.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number two is approval of minutes. Special meeting minutes of June 23, 2022 are attached. Need a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of June 23, 2022, as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call roll.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Same.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
That's Dane.
Motion passed. Audience participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to talk to the, address the council? Who is not on the agenda? No takers. New business. Item number three is planning commission appointment. Brian Payne has applied for a reappointment to the Lansing Planning Commission to serve three-year term, ending on April 30, 2025. I need a motion to approve Lansing Planning Commission reappointment of Brian Payne for a term ending on April 30, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No, call roll.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number four is Board of Zoning Appeals appointment. Tim Cahill has applied for reappointment to Lansing Board of Zoning Appeals to serve a three-year term, ending on 30 April, 2025. So I need a motion to approve the Lansing Board of Zoning Appeals reappointment of Tim Cahill for a term ending on April 30, 2025. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call roll.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number five is Aquatic Center ballot resolution and sales tax election documents. The governing body has expressed a desire to allow citizens to vote and decide whether to proceed with building an aquatic center. If approved, the resolution would put the question on the general election ballot for November 8, 2022. While the city has conceptual designs at this time, if Lansing voters approve the sales tax issue, true design engineering will begin immediately. The city has been working with Waters Edge out of Lenexa, Kansas on preliminary conceptual design. Collections of sales tax would commence on 1 July, 2023. Lansing's current sales tax rate is 8.95%. If approved by the citizens, Lansing's new sales tax rate would be 9.4%. For comparison, Baser Sales Tax is 8.5%, Dongonoxys is 9.25, and Leavenworth is 9.5%. Other sales tax jurisdictions further south exceed 10%. It is worth noting that Lansing currently has a 1% community improvement district for Main Street Chrysler Dodge Ram, Jeep Ram, so the sales tax rate on that parcel would be 10.4% if we do that. So I need an act, I need a motion to approve Resolution Number B8, 2022, a resolution authorizing and providing for the calling of a special question election, the question of imposing a .4 or 5% sales, citywide, real-tail sales tax. I get that right? For the purpose of financing the cost of certain public improvements, the issuance of sales tax, general obligation bonds, and providing for the giving of notice of said election.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
Couple questions.
Done.
We had started out talking about putting in a splash park. And all of a sudden, we shifted over to a pool. Are we doing them both? Are we just doing the pool? We're doing them together?
Okay, so the splash park is part of the master plan, master park plan, Don? This is separate, so because citizens have continually asked us for a pool, we've decided to put it to a vote and then use sales tax to fund it, not as part.
I understand what we're doing with the vote. But I've been asked a couple of questions about, okay, since you're considering a pool, you know, what is it going to look like and whatever? Can we, can we get this design, can we get it out in the connection or get it out on the website so people can read it and see it before the vote?
Oh, yeah.
So they know what they're voting on?
Yeah.
Something like this or whatever?
So we're going to have something like this in the upcoming Lansing connection. We were planning on doing mailers at some point in September also to educate people. The one thing that I had said, and the mayor alluded to this also, so that's just conceptual?
Yes, I understand it.
So I mean, it could change a little bit. The slides might look different, whatever. So if you're showing that to people, just be sure to remind them of that, that it could be a little bit different.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, somebody's asking, what's it going to look like?
Yeah.
Going to have a lazy river? I said, yeah, but, you know, they'd like to see something, you know?
Yeah.
Get it out in the connection or on the website or some mailers would be great.
The other thing, part of your first question, the mayor hit the nail on the head. The splash pad was part of Phase One of the master plan. And I think when we updated the master plan, I think we said aquatics was like 1A or 2A. If you guys remember, we added this kind of after the fact. But since there was a lot of feedback, that's why this kind of got pushed to the forefront. I would say if the vote on this fails, though, I mean, that probably speeds up the splash pad.
Well, we're still going to pursue a splash pad.
Yeah. It's one of those things, if this passes, this body will have to discuss the timeline of the splash pad and because...
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand all of that.
Yeah.
But I just, because I've been asked by several citizens, you know, well, you guys talked about a splash pad, you know, initially, which wouldn't cost as much as a pool.
Yeah.
And what has happened to that? Is that going to go in with this on the sales tax initiative? We're going to do them both together?
It'd be separate.
If this passes, we'll do this and then we'll go through the splash pad or?
It'd be separate, I guess, is what I would say. But if this fails, the splash pad would probably be accelerated. Whereas if this passes, it's maybe more of a TBD.
All right, thank you.
So.
So they're both probably won't be done in unison then, is what you're saying, together? One will be, if this, if the pool passes, we'll go out to the pool first? Or that's what we're going to have to decide as a council, is what you're... Am I understanding what you're saying?
Yeah, if the pool question passes, we'd probably, I mean, it's something that the governing body would have to evaluate. The splash pad plan was over a million dollars. And I think we were looking at that, I think, just coming from regular revenues. We weren't going to issue debt for that. So the debt that we would be issuing, if this passes, that wouldn't, that wouldn't pay for the splash park.
But then I had a question that was asked to me. Are they going to be in the same location? They will not be in the same, we're not planning on putting them in the same location.
Correct.
I asked, is everything going to be at Bernard Park or is it going to be at two different places?
Yep, so the splash pad, as it's currently laid out, would be at City Park. And I think they were looking at using the current concession stand for all of the motors and chlorine containers and all of that stuff. So, yeah, but this would...
This isn't at Bernard Park.
Yeah.
The location is TBD right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct. And this has got a, this pool concept's got a zero entrance type thing into the deeper water. So, you know, the small kids could still come out to mom's and have a good time, and then we can put the splash park in there.
Are they not going to be in unison? They'll be separate, separate locations?
Yes.
That answers the questions that I would ask.
Okay, thanks, yeah.
Okay, I got one question. Are we paying to have this put on the ballot?
There'd be minimal costs to put it on the ballot, yeah. Since it's already the general election, the costs would be pretty minimal.
It's going to be less than if we had a special election.
Yes, oh, yes, yes.
And the other comment that I would make, and you and I have talked about this, people have to understand that this just builds the pool. That's it. It doesn't staff it, it doesn't maintain it, it doesn't hire the people, the chemicals. This just builds the pool. So there are going to be costs associated with this somewhere down the line. So people need to keep that in mind. Just because you live in Lansing doesn't mean you get rights. I mean, it's going to have to go to the public. It's a sales tax. So, and so like I say, just so people understand that, that's all this does is build pool.
Yeah, and it, yes, and I mean, it just depends on what, you know, bids come in and how much we can, you know, get for the bonds, so I mean...
Well, yeah, I don't want people saying, well, I pay sales tax, let's just go free. That's not the way it's going to work.
No, you're admitting it.
Oh, right.
Pay for all the chemicals.
Right, right. There are going to be costs associated with it, no doubt.
Well, isn't that what we talked about when the gentleman was here that night about how many lifeguards? That's all associated with the pool also, correct?
It is, and we've had those discussions too about if there's, if there's any way it can be designed where you need, pick a number, eight lifeguards instead of 10 lifeguards or whatever. Just a way to design it where we don't have an excessive number of teenagers we need to hire. Like, we've even talked about using, instead of a concession stand, like a vending machine, we've talked about things like that. Like, we're brainstorming all kinds of things like that, so.
I think between now and November 8th, we have plenty of time to, you know, enlighten the community about what's going on, design, things like that we're discussing, so.
This will be the front page of the Lansing connection coming out in August. We're going to have a big article about it. The one thing that our PIO mentioned, though, I mean, since it's coming out in mailboxes in early August, I guess with the timing of everything, that next connection would probably fall after the election is done now. So we'd be doing something in the connection and there'd probably be mailers and things like that also.
Bulletin board out in front, you can put stuff on there, right? The signage out there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And similar, you guys who have been around for a few years probably remember too, similar to DeSoto Road, we can't advocate for it. We can educate. You guys can be passionate about it on a personal level. But the city itself cannot come out and tell people, vote yes, vote no, whatever. We can educate.
We could get questions. I mean, we're showing four lanes. I know we talked and Kerry, I supported Kerry completely on relooking, making it larger, whatever. Six lanes, six lanes does swim meets, you know? That's a revenue tied to YMCA and clubs and all kinds of stuff. So we would be one of a few outdoor locations that actually has a pool that can conduct swim meets. And that's, that brings in hotels and, because swim meets are more than just one day.
Yeah, that's a good point.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. And this is just a preliminary design to begin with, just to get something on paper.
Yeah.
Conceptually, I like the fact that you have lanes and a, you know, lazy river and such. But, I mean, we can always discuss exactly what we think that's...
We should advertise it. What I'm saying is we get a picture of this out there to people and say, this is a conceptual, what we're looking at, but it's going to change, you know, and could even make a comment in the article, what Marcus is saying, you know, if we do like six lanes, you know, then we could do blah, blah, blah to draw in revenue, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
Give that information to the people before the vote. Just saying, you want a pool or not, it's not going to pass. That hasn't passed in the past. Get more information out to people.
Well, with this passes, Tim, will we lose the complete use of the school's pool? Aren't they using some of it now? I mean, doesn't...
I'm not aware of anything like, if anything, I think they'd, I think they'd be kind of excited about this. But I, I'm not aware of any... Yeah, yeah.
Very limited use of the high school pool, right?
Yeah. So I don't think we'd, I don't think we'd lose any use or anything like that there.
I mean, I don't know how much use we have of it now, but I mean, this is not going to take, just shut us down from the school and we only have this.
They're probably glad to see us quit using it.
All right, any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call roll.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
All right, motion passed. Item number six is Ordinance Number 1085 Sewer and Solid Waste Assessments pursuant to Chapter 16, Utilities Section 16116 and 16209E of the city's code ordinances. A copy of the ordinance number 1085 listed in the account name, property address, and delinquent amounts for customers whose accounts are at least two months past due is attached for your review. Upon adoption of the city council and subsequent publication in the Leavenworth Times, this ordinance shall constitute a lien against the real estate for which the service is supplied. Staff does not submit this ordinance for assessment until August 25, 2022. Residents are given the opportunity to be removed from the ordinance by setting up payment plan with the city before the date. The staff has informed each resident interested in setting up a payment plan. So I need a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 1085 for assessment of delinquent sewer and trash bills.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Are we still giving this to a collection agency?
These are property owners, so this goes to the county. It gets assessed on property taxes.
So we're not turning them over to a collection agency?
No, we have a separate list of people who are renters, and that would go to...
That would go to our collection agency. Thank you.
Do you, do you see anything in your, you've dealt with it now, this was the second year we've been doing it this way, isn't it?
No, we've been doing it forever this way, yeah.
Well, do you think, is there anything that we, you see that we need to change on it or to improve it any better than it is? Any ideas?
No, this year, we're going to try something different where we send a letter. I mean, we send out quarterly delinquency notices. They get a bill every month with the balance on it. The delinquency notice lets them know that, hey, we're going to either assess your property or send you for collections. You can contact the city for payment. But this year, we're going to try, we're doing a little bit earlier so that we can send out a letter to each resident as well, just to notify them, hey, this is what's going to happen if you, if this gets assessed to your property.
Now, the works that we do with the county, you say these are the county's list. Are we gaining anything from the county on that? I mean, are they working with us on this?
Oh, yeah. We just send them a list.
Pumps in the road or anything?
No, it's pretty standard procedure. I think most cities are doing this. And so, and it's actually, we have about a 98% collection rate for these because they're tied to the property taxes.
So you collect the money?
We just collected a year later.
And then, okay. And then, what I'm noticing is repeat votes.
I would say probably 80% of these are repeating.
Right.
Yeah.
When you say you're sending it to the county, does that be added to their property tax assessments?
Yep.
Does that also become a lien on their property?
Technically, we don't, we don't do an official lien on the property. We just have them assess it to the property tax. Just because of the time and paperwork involved in that and then tracking all of that. I know the city of Leavenworth, the city clerk there has called me about this because they do it that way and she's trying to change it because it creates kind of a headache.
Okay, so it just shows up on their property tax?
Correct.
If they don't pay their taxes, their house gets sold, right?
After three or four years, I believe, yeah.
I mean, after a while, yes.
Yeah.
It's part of their esprit?
Right, yeah. So we'll get calls, hey, my house payment went up and they said it's because of a special assessment by the city of Lansing. And we're like, yep, because you didn't pay your trash and sewer bill.
Is the larger amounts there, like where they haven't paid all year? Some of these are, you know, they're like $2,600 roughly, $2,700. That's a complete, they just haven't done nothing all year long.
Most likely, yeah. The smaller amounts, like you can see some that are like $400 or $500, those are people who are probably, don't, they're on septic, so they don't have sewer. They just have the trash bill and they're not paying it. Versus someone who has a trash bill that's, say, $100 a month. Well, there's $100 a month and then there's $10 in interest. And then the next month, they owe $200 and it's $20 of interest. So most of these, probably half of it or almost half of it is interest that's accrued.
But is it getting, it just seems like there's a smaller list, it seems, every year.
Yeah, this has gone down. The number of assessments has gone down, so that's kind of encouraging. We used to have like 70, between 70 and 80.
It seems significantly smaller.
It should be a couple pages.
But it's still unfair that some of our residents pay that and these guys get away with it.
Well, they're not, you know, eventually.
They're not really getting away with it because we're going to get the money one way or another. It's just how we get the money is a little tougher.
This is one year.
They mask this as one year?
Yeah, these are year.
And a great deal of it could be interest.
Yes.
And that's not a motivator? That would be a huge motivator.
And we, that's why we encourage people to contact us because if they get on a payment plan, we work with them on the interest. If they make consecutive payments for so many months, we'll reduce some of their interest to help them get ahead so that they can get it paid off. Because it's worth it to us to get the money in-house versus getting extra in interest. So we lower that interest a little bit to help them.
There's nothing new here. This happens every year. And I've seen this list every year. And it just amazes me, the same names that are on there every year.
People that you know that you recognize the name of. You see it again and again and again. People you go to church with, and you want to ask them at church, hey, why don't you pay your bill?
Well, and this gets publicized.
This gets published, yeah.
It'll be in the paper.
Yeah, it goes in an ordinance, public, public. Okay. I do have a motion and a second on this one, so call roll.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Motion passed. Reports, department heads, anybody got anything in the departments? No. City attorney?
Nothing reported.
City engineer, I already asked you. City administrator?
So when we did our budget work session a few weeks ago, one of the capital and supplemental items that was included was engineering and design of the repair of the town center detention pond walls. Some of you guys might have seen the wall by Exchange Bank had some issues. That happened a couple of years faster than we were hoping for. Like I said, we were already planning on designing the repairs, but that sped things up a little bit. So I know I've spoken to Mike a little bit and his team, and I know we're going to start kicking around options and ideas to get that repaired faster than we were originally hoping for because obviously, we do not want that wall to completely fall in, so. Wanted to update you guys on that. Also, last week, we got a lot of questions about fiber internet installation in Lansing. I know I've spoken to the mayor about it quite a bit. Earlier, we had a meeting with Matt Schmitz, Mike Spickelmeier, our public information officer, myself, to kind of talk about things with the installation of the fiber internet and just to kind of go over some items with that for you guys tonight. I don't know if we have a, if we're going to put up that right-of-way thing? And Mike and Matt, I don't know if you guys are able to come up and answer any questions they have. But many of the questions kind of revolve around digging in yards and things like that, and...
So here's a, here's a list of the permitted fiber routes that are happening right now. The items in green are the Clearwave fiber that have been reviewed and permitted. The items in orange are AT&amp;T fiber that has been reviewed and permitted. And the red are in-progress Clearwave permits. That is eight of the 14 that they intend to submit. So as you can see, more than 50% of the city is currently under permit for fiber optic cable installation. We have a lot of work going on in the right-of-way. So a couple of items that seem to come up is a lot of people's misunderstanding of how easements work and how such things go on. So there is public utility easement and public utilities of which fiber optic cable is telecommunications is authorized to occupy our easements that have been established typically by plat or other mechanisms. So these easements exist out there, and in order for them to access the easement, they come into our office and get a permit. I think one thing that we want to make clear is, under item number 13 of our permits, and I'll read it verbatim, "All areas disturbed by construction shall be fertilized and sotted in accordance with the city of Lansing technical specifications." So the Lansing technical specifications say that they give, they give the requirements that the contractor is supposed to do to restore this. So they're not supposed to leave bare spots, they're not supposed to leave it all tore up. They are supposed to come back and do that. Now, the contractors have a $10,000 bond with the city. Currently, it is per contractor, not necessarily per permit. We're making some discussions on whether or not we should interpret the bonding to have a $10,000 permit for, per permit in order to maybe have some more teeth if we start getting some issues. But at this point, you know, it is not, it is not the right time to seed. The time to seed is more in the fall. You know, September is really, you really want to seed when you got cool weather and you got more moisture and rain and stuff like that. So we want to give the contractor the opportunity to do the right thing. But as you, as you saw on the previous slide, there is a tremendous amount of work going on right now.
Also, if I say I don't want to look at bare dirt for three months, what are we supposed to say to these people?
Right, I mean, can we put something in this connection on explaining this? I mean, I think that'd be helpful.
Sure.
You know, so at least they understand the reason why it's dirt is it's going to, they're going to come back and...
I mean, if, yeah, the answer is that if they tear up my yard, I'm going to fix it. I mean, I understand that they have the authority to come in there and do that. As a matter of fact, I will probably bury my own cable because I'm anal retentive like that. But, you know, that's, I think, it's one, you know, we can hold the contractor to the standard and we will hold them to the standard. We will hold their bond until they restore the air.
A lot of, a lot of the places that they have dug already, if you look at Gilman Road, for example, where they've started work down there, what they're trying to do is they're trying to cut the sod and lay it to the side, do the work they need to do, put the dirt back, and then lay the sod back over. So it's not as bad as like having bare patches of dirt everywhere, but it requires water for that sod to take.
Sod is hard to get a seed because sod, you got to keep it wet.
You got to soak it.
Right, but they're reusing the same sod that's already there is what they're doing. So, but it still requires water.
Hard to keep life in a seed, so.
Right.
And this is not the right time for either one.
Right. Unfortunately, it's not.
No.
Can you go back to that first slide you showed us, please? I had to understand that AT&amp;T is finally starting to move their fiber into the city?
Yeah, everything that's in orange on that map is AT&amp;T. That's currently permitted fiber for AT&amp;T.
They just started that.
Correct.
Okay, because they've had fiber up here for quite a while.
So the way to think of that...
What is the other company, the one?
So the way to think of that is if it's orange or green, it's under construction right now. Meaning, those are active right-of-way permits that's been permitted. Orange is AT&amp;T, green is Clearwave. The red stuff that's on the map is permits that have been applied for by Clearwave that are under review that we have not issued permits for yet. Because we want to see how they're going to do on these first four before we turn loose on the rest.
I just, just curious, about AT&amp;T, we've been after them for years to extend their fiber into the city and they've been putting it off, putting it off, and all of a sudden, we get Clearway going and all of a sudden, boom.
That's actually pretty accurate. That's kind of how that works, yeah.
It's nice how that works.
Yeah.
To just be clear, the orange is AT&amp;T permits that's been done. The green are the Clear, Clearwave?
That's currently under construction.
Currently under, and then the red is...
That's stuff that's been applied for by Clearwave that we have not, that... That's stuff that's been applied for by Clearwave that we have not, that Public Works Department has not issued a permit for yet because we're waiting to see how these first four go. You know, they've applied for the next four, but we're kind of, we're trying to kind of control that rollout a little bit so that we don't, you know, so they don't get overextended and have a lot more open than they can repair in a hurry.
Yeah, can we expect sometime that they're gonna have both AT&amp;T and Clearwave?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You already have some areas where you could potentially have it on top of each other right now. Uh, if you look at, actually just, just up the hill from us here, um, that you got AT&amp;T is, has an active permit there and Clearwave also has an active permit in there. So, there is the potential that those two companies could both be working on top of each other at the same time.
I know, I've got double flags, so...
Did we put anything out about AT&amp;T coming and tearing up?
They've never given us anything.
They've never, they've never publicized them coming into the...
What I noticed in my neighborhood over here in Fawn Valley is shortly after we got with Clearwave and started that and that word got out, the next week, there was a guy walking up and down the street surveying. And I stopped him, I says, can I help you with something? And he says, well, I'm from AT&amp;T and I'm, you know, whatever, so they...
Doing the design.
They got the word.
Other than...
Competition.
I was just gonna say, other than applying for the permits and everything, we really haven't heard all that much from AT&amp;T.
Right, they've been pretty tight-lipped.
Right, so they're doing the same amount of destruction to a yard or to the easement as Clearwave's doing by underground, you know, tearing up the sod in the yards, but...
It's still underground work.
We're not answering for AT&amp;T, we're answering a lot of complaints on the Clearwave.
At this point, yeah.
I'm trying to figure out how that works.
I think we've had, I think we've had people call in about the AT&amp;T work, too.
Yeah, they're calling in about everybody digging in there.
Oh, they are?
I don't know that they've necessarily called council about that. I know there's been a couple people that have called council about the Clearwave aspect, which,
Clearwave, fine.
Since the city, since council authorized money to go into that, that, you know, they look to us and wanna know what are we gonna do to help them.
Right.
Whereas AT&amp;T, it's a little, you know, it's completely on their own.
Mommy, what, what is the easement from the curb?
Sixteen feet is typical from the back of the curb towards your home. Sixteen feet. It varies area to area, but typically that's what it is. If you have sidewalk on your side, it's usually one feet, one foot behind the sidewalk. That's why we had that other diagram that Ken had up there for a little bit, which is actually on our website now, too. We put that out on the website and we can, when we do the connection thing, we can put some information about that.
Yeah.
I actually took a phone call for a complaint about this. And the, the grass and digging in the yard is only one aspect of the issue, it's irrigation systems.
There you go.
You know, and then they, the guy I talked to, they hit his irrigation system and they fixed it. And I said, well, you're lucky because they didn't have to.
Yeah.
I said, your irrigation system in a right-of-way, which means you have to take it out and put it back.
Right, that's exactly right.
And I had to explain to him how that works and, you know, some of the problems we've had in, in Rock Creek with curbs and stuff.
Right.
And, uh, he, he kinda didn't agree with me, but I'm like, that's what happens when you buy a house in the city and there's a right-of-way.
Right, irrigation systems.
So, we need to discuss that in, in that article, because that's the most complaints I'm getting right now is, they're tearing up my sprinkler heads, my sprinkler system.
Right.
And then I'm gonna have to pay to fix it. Yeah, you are, you...
Irrigation systems can be installed, those can be installed in the right-of-way, but they're what's considered, they're what's called at-risk, meaning they're in a public space.
Right.
And it's a private infrastructure in a public space. So, if it gets damaged, destroyed, it's the homeowner, whoever owns that, that entity or that item, it's their responsibility to repair it. Most utility companies are gonna repair it because they don't want the PR, the negative PR of, you know, they tore my stuff up and didn't fix it.
Yeah.
And I believe our permit pretty specifically says, if you're installing a sprinkler head in the right-of-way, we're not responsible for it.
There's a separate, right, there's a separate permit for that and the tests have that language in there.
But, but the problem is a lot of times people will, will install sprinkler systems without talking to us.
Right.
And I think sometimes people just see a payday and do it and they may, they don't really talk to their property.
Or, you know, they'll get somebody to pull the permit, like if I hire somebody, they're pulling the permit from the city and supposed to know the regs. They're not gonna tell me, hey, by the way,
Right, yeah.
this permit says that, you know, if your sprinkler head gets knocked off by AT&amp;T, it's on you.
The other thing...
I think most of the confusion for folks is they're mowing that strip of grass and irrigating that strip of grass between the sidewalk and the street.
Right.
Um, and then somebody's coming and digging it up and they're like, hey, you know, I've been taking care of this piece of land. It's like, well, yeah, but it's right-of-way. And you, I, I don't think a lot of folks understand where that starts and stops.
They certainly feel ownership towards it because they take care of it, absolutely.
Well, and, and the goodness is, I mean, folks come and go. So, in Lansing, sprinkler systems were installed under three or four owners of the home later. So, they don't, you know, they...
Right, yeah.
So, the lack of knowledge is, is, I think is the big key versus knowing they put a sprinkler system in and knowing that they signed their own risk, that was four or five owners ago, you know? That's not...
It'd be good to put in.
The other...
You could buy a house with a fence on a right-of-way and no, no, yeah, it happens.
The other thing to keep in mind, too, is that, you know, I know there's been a couple people that have said, well, how come they're digging up four holes in my yard but only two in my neighbor's yard? Well, every time they cross an existing utility, they have to literally put eyes on that utility, meaning they have to expose it. If it's a gas line, which is typically what they are, water line, et cetera, they have to pothole that utility to make sure that they can see it so that if they hit it, they know they hit it. Because if they don't have it open and they hit it, that, there's no way for them to know that they damaged it, so.
Is there any way when we put that into the connections that we can explain about that type of stuff so they know it's coming, it's in their yard?
Certainly.
Yeah, just kinda like a what to expect if they come to your yard.
Is this eventually gonna get into the old part of Lansing, too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Topic of conversation that come up. You know, you're talking about the footback behind the sidewalk and easement and sprinklers and...
Already there.
Landowners' responsibility if they put the, you know, what we've just been talking about. Down in the old part of town, where there's ditches and culverts, how does, how are we going to, what is the, gonna be the pathway for the, this cable over there when you got a ditch and not a...
They, they could very easily put it in the bottom of the ditch if they want to. Fiber doesn't care if it's wet, so it could be...
You mean, that's probably, they, they will do it in the, in the ditch, in the ditchways?
They could, if that's the only space that's available.
Yeah, wherever they got room in the right-of-way.
Right, I mean, it's gonna be dependent on where the right-of-way is for that area and how they can fit it in there. But if it needs to be in the bottom of the ditch, they can do that. Because like I said, fiber doesn't, it can be...
There's nothing to hold them back. If, if the right-of-way stops at the head of the ditch coming up into somebody's yard, they got to do from the head of the ditch to the street, that's where it has to go, whether there's a, a two-foot ditch there or not.
Right.
So, they'll still have to put it in that, in that right-of-way of the ditch.
Right, it's gotta stay in the right-of-way. They don't have permission to go on to somebody's private property.
Well, I, I didn't know if there was something looked at different being it's not storm showers and fights underground compared to ditches and culverts like we have over Ward One. You know, it's probably eighty percent of our streets over there are ditches and culverts. So, what, what do, what do we got to look, kinda complaints do we have to look at once they start over there? Are they, I mean, you know, they...
Yeah, I think, I mean, I'd have to look at those areas because I know, like I said, the right-of-way is different in every area. But if there's still fifteen feet of right-of-way in there from the edge of the pavement, even if there's a ditch there, more than likely there's gonna be some space behind that ditch where they can locate those utilities. But if there isn't, if that ditch takes up that entire width, they can put it in the ditch if they have to.
And Matt, when you say fifteen foot from, is that from the center of the road?
No, it's, so, on average, it's sixteen feet from curb. I was using fifteen feet because I know in the older sections of town, the right-of-way is tighter. It's not as wide as it is in the newer areas. So, that's what I mean by it varies. And the only way to tell you exactly how much right-of-way is in front of your property is to look at the plat. And if the plat doesn't show it, then it gets more complicated from there.
Now, they gonna have to put the cable on both sides of the street or just one side?
Clearwave is actually running down both sides of the street and they're doing that because they don't wanna cross the streets anymore than they have to.
Because if you take fifteen feet from the curb at my house, you've got the majority of my front yard.
Mm-hmm.
I've got a car length and a half of driveway.
Right.
I can put two cars in there.
Right.
Didn't dig all that up. Don't worry about it, Dan.
That's fine. I've got fire hydrants, they can take that.
Hey, thanks for making it to City's yard. I appreciate you making it to City's yard.
But the whole point of this is, is, is people want, have been wanting fiber for years and...
Right.
And to, to bake a cake, you have to crack some maize.
Right.
Grass will grow back.
Right.
In a, in a year from now, when the grass is growing back and people have fast internet, they'll be going, thank you Lansing for doing this.
There will be, yeah, it's, it's a temporary pain for a long-term gain.
Well, let me ask you this.
It makes a difference whether they're eighty years old or whether they're thirty, too. If somebody is eighty, didn't have a computer, could care less where that ditch is being dug.
No, but if they're paying for cable and they don't...
Don, don't make, I mean, they, don't make fun of Don like that. I'm just, I'm just thinking, Don. Hey, I got...
I thought you were on my side.
I am on your side, I am on your side. Uh, question for you. Um, we could do, I mean, do you still do the coffee with administrator with...
Yeah, I haven't...
Do you think we could do something like that real soon where you host, and, and we have pre-planned questions and... So, it's clearly discussed and everyone can go and watch it and go back and review it. Go, I mean, that would be better than, and faster than, I mean, the Journal's not gonna come out for another month or so. So, I think maybe we need to do a coffee where it opens to the public, but more importantly, I mean, yeah, so...
We could talk about this and the Aquatic Center and...
Absolutely, I, I think we can, we could really hit a home run by, you know, getting this out sooner than later where it clearly, um, helps answer a lot of questions and people can come and ask the questions.
I think we could probably...
I think it's real important that our community, um, that folks know what's coming at them. Nobody likes surprises.
Yeah.
So, if you're prepared for it, it, it doesn't hurt as bad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if you, and if you leave a number, if you have, you know, you need to talk to somebody about that, I mean, there's that sense of security, too.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Can we just do something like movers and shakers, kind of a little infomercial on it?
Yeah, we can do something like that, too, yeah.
You know, I mean, I think that'd be good. You could hit the website, say, here's, here's all the stuff.
That's actually what I was just gonna get at. Um, I was having Ken pull up. Mike made a page on the Public Works page today that has this image on it and has some other information about how the right-of-way functions and things like that. From our comments tonight, we could certainly take that page and expand it and get all of this stuff in one central page on our website and then turn around and share that out through social media and so on and so forth to help people understand what it is they actually own, how this functions, what the right-of-way is in a city. Because it is different. A lot of people who, who have lived out in the county or have grown up in the county, they think they own to the middle of the road. Well, in the county you do, because then there's an easement that gives the county the right to use part of that property. In the city, it's different. The city actually owns the property that's the right-of-way and you actually own from your property line back. So, it's, it's a little different, but...
This is a different right-of-way than like up in Woodland Hills where we also have a utility right-of-way behind our house as well.
So, that would be an easement.
That'd be an easement?
Yeah. And the difference between those is a property owner pays taxes on easements, they don't pay taxes on the right-of-way. Because the right-of-way is owned by the city, that easement, you own the ground, but somebody else has the right to use that ground, which means you still pay taxes on it, but somebody else can use it as well as you.
You still have the same issues if we put fences or something out there and they gotta get the utilities, they have the right to...
They have the right to remove that fence or do what they need to to do their work.
Okay.
Yeah. But we could certainly put more information together on the website that lays all that out.
I think explaining those terms to citizens where they know what's coming, it would be a great win.
Okay.
I wanna, I wanna get back to Mike's thing with the ten thousand dollar permit. So, if they don't do something, I mean, if they gotta fix everything that they tear up and they don't, ten thousand dollars doesn't touch what it would take to put it back.
The, the permitting requirement was established by...
Well, no, and I, and I'm not, I'm just saying, you're saying maybe we should look at that and I'm thinking, yeah, we should.
Oh, he's talking about the bonding.
The bonding thing, yeah, the bonding.
By permit or by...
Yeah, whether we take a bond per permit versus a bond per contractor. This, this one is unique. It has been so long since we've had a contractor do, most of the time, you get a contractor comes in and they do, like Spectrum will come in and, and replace one line.
Right.
And they get a permit and they replace the line. This one is unique in that we've got these blanket permits that are just covering the entire city.
Mike, would it be a fair statement or true statement that, uh, a company that comes in, they wanna do things right?
They wanna, they want your business.
Because they, right. The end game is, they want you to sign up for their internet. So, if they haven't fixed it, you know, homeowner looks at that, you know, they got bad taste in their mouth. Would that not be an incentive that, that kinda puts me at ease in thinking, you know?
So, I talked with, uh, I met with the supervisor for Clearwave for construction for the entirety of the United States this morning. He was in town, he came by and met with me, as well as, I, I don't remember his name off the top of my head, but he's the, he's the supervisor over construction for Clearwave for the entire United States, for Tennessee, here, everywhere. He was in town this morning, so he came by and met with me, as well as the supervisor that's over this project in Lansing and the rest of the state of Kansas for their projects they're doing. That was something that he brought up. He said they understand that if they mess this up when they're doing the construction, they've lost that customer.
Correct.
As well as whoever that customer tells.
And that's what I was, you, you said it much more eloquently.
Yeah.
But that's what I was trying to say.
They understand that.
If I'm, if I'm them, the incentive is going to be doing the job correctly.
Hundred percent agree.
Uh, making sure that everything's put back nicely, ideally.
Right, it doesn't do them any good to tear things up and then run away.
Correct.
Because that's how you lose customers, that's how you alienate people and that's how you don't get the saturation rates that they need in order for this to actually work.
And it's worth noting, too, they still have outstanding permits. So, I mean, if, if they're doing things poorly, that's another card the city would have to play.
Right, and we can withhold those, like, those continuation of permits until they repair the ones that we have. Right, that's part of the reason why we've only issued four.
That's true, I, I know you said that.
Yeah.
There wasn't another community recently, since there seems to be this concern about, you know, perhaps field operations workmanship. There is a community in the recent, I'd say, last couple of months who red-flagged an entire operation because of all the complaints they were generating, um, and not finishing up with the work, you know, and disruptions and things of that nature. And, and I think it's squared away now because they're back to work. But, um, but that was one of the options that the City Council had used in that community and that was a red flag and stop all work for that particular vendor.
And that's, as I understand it, the way our right-of-way permits are, that's something this council could do as well. If it got to that point where it felt, where you guys felt like it was time to stop them, you could tell Mike to pull the right-of-way permits and that stops all work. Till they go back and repair what's there or until you're comfortable that they've done what you need to in order for them to move forward.
I feel good about the fact that that gentleman took the time to...
Give them a chance.
Right.
And the fact that he actually brought that up to you.
Right.
Tells me that's a prior, a priority.
Yeah, I agree. I was happy to hear that from them without me having to prompt anything from that.
Right.
Because that told, to your point, that makes me feel good that they, they know this, they've, you know, they understand it. And these guys that are doing this, with the exception of the guy who's over the entire United States, the rest of them are all local guys that have been in Kansas City. These are guys that I knew from when I was in Shawnee, that were with different companies in, down there that have now moved up here with Clearwave. So, I mean, they're, they're guys that are local, they're not, it's not like they're coming in from another state, tearing things up and then running home, so.
Right.
Well, the guy, the guys that are actually doing the work are contractors, though, aren't they?
The contractors that are coming in that are doing the physical labor, yes. But the people who are managing those are the ones that are local from this area.
So, the Clearwave has managers in Lansing, I know supervising the contractor.
They actually have a manager and an OSP engineer, which is the guy who's able to make changes to the design and make decisions on the fly while they're building it. Both of those are in town every day while they're doing this, this layout, this build.
All right, thanks, Matt, Mike. Appreciate the information, we just need to get as much of it out to the citizens as we can.
Certainly.
Um, and we'll go around the horn, Dave.
No.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Dave. Gene?
Uh, yeah, I, Matt and everybody, I know it's not just Matt, but we want to spread the credit around. On the Independence Day celebration, Matt, Mike, uh, everybody. I mean, I was out there Saturday afternoon, saw a lot of folks working in hot weather. It grew good, then saw the fireworks that night, great show. We sent an extra couple that come from out of town who were, looked in the paper for places to go see fireworks and they decided that they would come up here. And I assured them that they wouldn't be disappointed and they weren't, so. And there's a lot of people like to see it stayed there. You know, it was easier to get in and out, a little bit more room, we weren't, like, all the trucks and everything were all cramped up in a small area, so. But a great job, great attendance, was out there twice, everything, great. So, to everybody who participated, thank you.
All right, thanks. Marcus?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what Gene just said. Thank you all, thank you all. That's a lot of work that leads up to that, months of preparation and then day of execution. I mean, you guys are just from sunrise to well past sundown, you know. Great job and thanks for helping that be such a huge success in Lansing. Hey, I want to thank Brian Payne. Thanks for coming tonight, Brian. It's great to see you. Thanks for volunteering, uh, to serve on our board and I appreciate you doing that. Thanks to Tim Cahill for, for volunteering on the board of zoning. That's pretty good. And, and I'll close with this. Hey, we, we know that the COVID numbers are on the rise. I got it. Wind dot is high right now. So Johnson County's fixing to put their CDC score out and it's going to be high. So just let everybody know that, yep, it, it is. But those that are vaccinated, there's no hospitalization rates climbing. It feels like you got the flu and it kind of knocks you out for three or four days and then you're back on your feet and you're doing well. So if you haven't had the opportunity to get the vaccine, you don't believe in it, you may want to now because we're back to high again across our local communities. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thanks, Marcus. Jesse?
Yeah, thanks Brian and Tim for volunteering. We appreciate everything you do. Um, I'd like to echo what this guy said about the Fourth of July festival. It was a great time. Um, I would just disagree with one thing Gene said though. I don't want that thing at Lansing Town Center. I want that property developed.
Yeah.
Well, and I, and I told people it's available. Hopefully, it's not available next year.
Yeah.
But if it is.
Yep.
Right, right.
No, they, they, they understood why it was where it was at, but it's just like.
If it's still available, reflect that on his eval. I think he's due right now.
I would, I would critique one thing. I wish we would have had more benches or bleachers for sitting and eating. I know there was only like six or seven maybe by the, the food trucks.
Right.
And there was a lot of, I'll call them squatters, because I was in line for a long time and I watched people sit there and they weren't eating. They were just sitting in a place to sit, so. Maybe a tent with a, one way in, one way out and say eating area or something, I don't know, you know, just an idea.
That's a good.
But it was a great time. I mean, the fireworks, Gene's right, you could see the fireworks from all over town. You could see it from my house, so it was a good time, great, great time. So that's all I got.
Thanks, Jesse. Greg.
Uh, before I get into that, Mike, um, I've noticed up in our ward where they were patching holes in the curbs where the curbs are falling apart, but there'd be like one curve that was a major hole and the little hole next to it got patched. Um, are they going to go back and patch the rest of those or was that just extra stuff that they had and they patched it with those, the extra stuff?
There, there's a lot of patching going on right now.
Okay.
All over the city. Uh, at this point, we're kind of trying to focus on one hundred forty-seven to get it all patched up before, uh, the contractor does the overlay, but then we're going to be patching all summer. As long as they're making asphalt, we're going to be patching.
All right, that, that was my question. Again, um, to reiterate what everybody else said, it was a great show. I have had multiple comments about, uh, that was the best fireworks show people have ever seen, that we should book them again next year already. A lot of comments on the location. And I also had a lot of comments on the date, where people came and said they were actually glad that we do it before the Fourth of July because it lets them spend time with their friends and, and local family and then on the Fourth of July, they travel. So I had three or four comments about that, so that was a positive thing. Again, great job by everybody on the staff. Brian and Tim, thank you for volunteering because we can't do everything ourselves. And on this day in history, in nineteen twenty-eight, sliced bread was sold for the first time by the Chillicothe Baking Company in Chillicothe, Missouri. Remember that, Don?
Did they have butter in them?
You got an insurance?
Thanks for that, Greg. Uh, Dan?
Just pick on Don, mate.
Yeah. Thank you for the volunteers. Appreciate it very much. Uh, Chief, I saw your new, uh, police officers out there. Uh, I was impressed. I talked with a few of them. And, uh, food was good, food was good.
All right, thanks, Karen.
Fireworks were awesome. Thank you. Sir, thank you. Appreciate it. Martha, it's good to see you too. It is so good, I, Matt and Mike, when you present, uh, you're concise, you get to the point, you explain things very well. So, uh, I can't tell you much. I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thanks, Carrie. Don?
Well, thanks for our volunteers and ditto on the Fourth of July celebration was great. And thanks to all the hard work that the staff and that put in on that. And one complaint, I have a semi trailer truck parked out here on the city street. We talked about this before. Will we do anything about that? Are we ticketing them or whatever? I mean, we've warned drivers or whatever and they say, well, I just drive for this company, blah, blah, blah. What do you need to do? We need to ticket the company?
Yeah, I'll double check. I know, uh, I mean, I know Mike went out and spoke to one of the drivers. I guess by, by now, it's been a month or two ago, but, but yeah, I, I suppose we could talk about making it, we'd need to make it a no parking zone or if we'd be able to ticket it now or.
Talking about right here in this.
That's our charge and our fee.
Put no overnight parking sign up like they do in the parking lots that you're.
It's interesting bringing that up, Mr. Studdnig, because when I came over to meet with Tim today, I, I mentioned that very truck because I saw him unhook it and drive away and leave the box truck out there.
Yeah, what are you saying? Maybe we ought to either ticket them or maybe charge them a fee for leaving a trailer there.
I thought there was already ordinance against parking a semi trailer against the curb.
Yeah, you're probably right, yeah.
I think there is. There's a weight limit. There's a weight limit against.
Well, that's why I made a complaint. Our ordinance is in the city. We don't want the ninety-two thousand pound plus vehicles on city streets, like in the neighborhoods and whatever. We've had this problem years ago and, and the people, the citizens that are over the road drivers and that, the driver, tractor, trailer, they've been leaving their, when they come home for the weekend or come home for two or three days, they've been leaving their tractor and trailer parked, you know, outside of town or someplace where they have permission to park. Not in the neighborhoods or on the city street. That's all I'm saying.
We, we discussed that when we were talking about the, the RVs and boats.
Right, yeah, it came up at the same time because there happened to be a truck sitting there that, that night.
Right, so the RVs and boats thing that you're referring to is twelve thousand pounds is the limit now. That particular property across the street is zoned as R-three, which means it's residential. Zoning typically for purposes of that code would extend to the center of the road, so technically he is parked in a residential area with a vehicle that's more than twelve thousand pounds. That's how I would approach that. Richard and I talked about it today because I was pulling out, after we got done with our meeting here, I was headed back over there and saw the guy backing in when he was doing, I was like, I had a feeling it would come up tonight. But like I said, we've talked about it. Um, what we need to figure out is, the question comes up because it's on the street. Is that something that Richard does? Is that something that PD does? It doesn't really matter, but somebody needs to, you know, between me and Steve, we can talk and we'll figure out. One of us can take care of it and get it, get it handled.
I think there's people parking down here with a local businessman. I presume that's his own.
Where at?
I think it's Mr. Wiley's property and where the.
Oh, where the flood.
Yeah, the vehicle that's.
That's a different zoning though.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, does that meet that zoning because.
Yeah, they, they pay, they paid a.
They rent it.
Well, no, no, I, I understand that, that perhaps he could go talk with Mr. Wiley or whoever the owner is.
I mean, I'm less concerned about them using an empty lot like that that really can't be used for anything else than I am with them parking it in front of City Hall.
Oh, no, no, I get that. I mean, I'm just saying that, hey, if you got to have a place parked.
Trying to give them an option.
Got you, okay. Now I get you. Thanks.
What, what, I go, where's the. What did they do? I mean, where did, where did it come to or go to with the conversation about parking a semi? Where, where were they parked at in Lansing? There's no place for them to park. What happens if somebody comes in and they, they, they.
I mean.
Are we going to start dinging all the residents that come in just because, you know, it's wrong? I know it's wrong. It's past the code.
We have one down on Cottonwood. It's the tractor, not, not the one that parked out here, but it's just the tractor of a semi that's parked in somebody's driveway. Richard went by and talked to them today.
They can park at Walmart, they can park at the old Kmart parking lot.
Can't park at Walmart.
Well, you can't park in Lansing either, so that's not our problem.
You're going to have to, there's going to have to be some conversations and then you're going to have to decide how you're going to approach it.
Correct.
That you're working on it.
Correct.
And you're going to get it worked out and figure out how to address the problem.
Yes, sir.